Yes. So the clarification on the agenda is that we want to get through the instructional, not get through, but we want to actually focus on the instructional services part of the agenda. We would love to get through the ELL portion of the agenda, but that's really dependent on how much time we need for this very important topic, which is pathways to graduation. And so we have tentatively decided that if we take an hour and a half for the ELL piece, or I mean, on the pathways to graduation piece, then we will not do the ELL piece. And we do have a very brief discussion of the HREC charge, but that should not take the signs. Do you think it'll take more than 15 minutes? So that's where we're at.
And the presentation for this is 15 minutes, so it should, it'll depend on how much we can come to an agreement on. It may not take the hour and a half depending on how much feedback we get.
Well, what I've seen is pretty good, so let's get started. And I will walk into, we have one, two, three, four, five, six. We have a quorum, there are only 10.
All right. Real quickly, so welcome, we're happy to be back here talking about pathways to graduation. Just a quick reminder on what the focus is for today. We were previously before you on November 7th with a lot of the same information. At the end of that work session, we came to a consensus and we were given next steps to come back with some policy changes to implement what we're about to share with you today. One key thing we'd like for you to consider at the end of this is working with us to delay one year, that implementation, so we're not here bringing forward that policy change because of a few things we will update you on. So initially, we were hoping to have some policy changes that you would make in concert with what would be happening at the state level to impact school year 1819. So what we'd like by the end of today is to get consensus that you're okay with us delaying that to 1920 for a couple of reasons. One, the state board and the SOL Innovation High School Redesign Committee, which I serve on, is meeting over the summer. We have three dates coming up. The state is also working on implementing, excuse me, submitting the ESSA plan to the federal government for approval that will have some implications on this. So we don't anticipate knowing any changes till probably December of 2017. And lastly, an important one also for everyone that we'll talk about is we do also have public hearing on this topic, and they're coming right here to Fairfax on June 27th at 6:30 at Luther Jackson. So because of those main areas, we wanna, we thought it was our best thinking to delay one more year, and we'll talk to you about why one more year, because of the timing that goes into all of this work. That's the main ask of today, and some of what you'll hear is already presented to you. So you'll see the objectives are to highlight the successes and the progress of the work since November 7th, review some, as I've already indicated, relevant items and proposals from VDOE and some that are still coming, and then to share our thinking about what that, why that delay for a year, and then provide any opportunity for inputs or questions. Okay? With that, I'm gonna turn it over to Jen Glazer, who will walk you through a couple of the highlights, the relevant items, and what our timeline looks like will be shared with Dr. Presidio.
Right. So as a reminder, the overview of this work is defined by our strategic plan, and when we look at overarching strategy four of the student success goal, you see that there is a bit of a progression or a continuum when it comes to pathways to graduation, starting with marketing our existing graduation pathways and requirements, and also studying those graduation requirements and pathways that we currently have. And we've been engaged in that work over the past two school years. We feel that we've made significant progress in those items. Building on that, the next item that we're tasked with doing is really taking a good look at our local requirements and how they compare with the state requirements, and considering what changes we can make to give more flexibility for our students to explore career pathways and truly connect to their interests through our electives and other work-based learning opportunities that we're developing. And then as we look at that progression again, another item that we're very focused on is developing those small tailored programs that may take a few years to develop, and so that's an ongoing longer-term connection to the strategic plan and high school pathways. The work is divided into multiple phases. The first phase that we're currently making the most progress in due to the timing and being able to move a little quicker without the need of outside approval from VDOE is really looking at those career interest courses and ensuring that our course offerings are in line with the workforce needs and higher education. We're also looking at any course-taking flexibility that we have in FCPS that we can explore on our own, and then really looking at opportunities for verified credit and how we can use our CTE competencies and CTE options to give students additional ways to earn verified credit outside of the SOLs within what's allowed by VDOE. When we look into phase two, we're looking at deepening our interdisciplinary and innovative learning, excuse me, as well as partnerships with higher education and employers to really increase our work-based learning opportunities, especially internships and getting our students out in the field while they're still in high school. So as we will discuss as we go, a lot of that phase two work requires approvals from VDOE, and that's why it will take a little bit longer to do. So as we dive into the rest of the presentation, I'd like to start by highlighting some of our progress. I think over the past two years, we've had significant success in a lot of our work related to high school pathways, and I do want to take a moment to celebrate some of that. The CTAC report and the FATE report highlighted some of these as well, and those of you who were available for that meeting had a lot of opportunity to talk with those groups, and we appreciate your support of both. So when we look at our successes, we really have done a lot to study those graduation requirements with our school-based and with our other central office colleagues. We've made a lot of progress on marketing existing pathways and really the development of online tools and electronic tools and resources for not only our families, but also our school counselors and teachers who are supporting academic advising. We've moved into electronic tracking for graduation requirements, so school counselors are no longer checking off credits by hand, they get reports through our student information system, which has been hugely beneficial. We also have online reporting for service learning, which is connected to Goal Two as well as our student success goal. And our student learning plan has begun implementation across 7th through 12th grade, and truly our schools are embracing this in new ways and finding ways to embed it and infuse it into our curriculum so that our students have very meaningful ways of exploring their interests and connecting to career interest courses as well as future career possibilities. Additionally, our work-based learning team has developed a continuum and a preliminary definition of what is work-based learning and what types of work-based learning experiences are available in FCPS, and we're moving into a pilot phase, if you will, with a couple of schools for next year, and we're excited to develop those partnerships. As we continue to focus on our workforce demands and our career preparation and student interests, we are also taking a close look at our academy offerings and truly want to partner with you to see how we can continue to expand those very specialized courses that are offered at our academies. We have also made significant progress in some of the longer-term planning. We've strengthened our partnership with Northern Virginia Community College. We're having much more regular meetings with their leadership team, members of their leadership team, and we're excited about some of the ways that we've brainstormed to move forward with workforce development and career pathways there, especially in cybersecurity and health and medical sciences. Additionally, our first class of seniors through Genesis Works is preparing to graduate, and we're looking at approximately 40 students for internships next school year, which would be about double where we are now. So that's just an example of a very special partnership that we hope to continue to grow and also look for other ways to get our students into the workforce while they're in high school. Our dual enrollment opportunities specifically with Northern Virginia Community College have also increased this year. We have online courses available on our online campus for English 12 and government dual enrollment, so we're seeing higher numbers of students participating in those free dual enrollment credits and earning the college credit while they're with us in high school. And then as far as our small or new tailored programs, we started two of those this year, and we are so excited about both the Edison Global STEM Challenges Program as well as our firefighting program. Thank you to several of you who were able to be a part of that very special ceremony on Friday for our first class of firefighters. It was truly an awesome event, and we're very excited about those two programs continuing into next year as well as looking at additional small tailored programs. To that point, we've increased our collaboration with our county partners, and we're very, very proud of that and looking forward to continue that as well. We're really operating in that one Fairfax umbrella approach to creating workforce pathways, and there's a meeting of workforce committee, Joint Workforce Committee tomorrow during which we'll be presenting on some of this as well. And then as you saw in November, we've identified some pathways for our students, and the hope is that by 2019-20, that our students will be able to start earning a pathway seal on their diploma if they are able to complete a sequence of courses. We've taken a deeper dive into those career clusters and what courses we currently have available and may be adding to our course offerings for next year. So as we discussed in November, this national career model is 16 career clusters, and it really organizes the jobs and industries into these clusters that are related by skills or products and promotes connections between academic and potential workforce opportunity as well as industry-recognized skills. So we do believe this is a strong foundation for continuing our pathways work. When we last discussed our high school pathways with you, we were looking at four pathways potentially, and what we realized from our conversations with you and with other stakeholders is that truly in FCPS, we already have the ability to expand out to the 16 career clusters, so we do believe that moving forward, we'd be able to honor the pathway seal for not just those four overarching that we initially presented, but in all 16. So we'll continue to update you on the progress there. And I did just want to spend a moment giving you a couple examples of pathways that students could earn. These four were in alphabetical order and a point in the document, so I chose these because I feel like they represent several of the key workforce areas. As you can see, each pathway includes at least four courses that are related to a career cluster, and at the end includes an option for an industry certification. And that's truly what we're striving for, that students could graduate from our schools with a credential that they could apply right away or that they could use to further their studies if they choose to continue on in that field. While each of our comprehensive high schools offers elective courses in each of the clusters, they don't all have the same course offerings, and we recognize that it is key that we have a way for students to have equitable access to programs. So that's where we come back to what we can do with our academy courses and our current model in order to allow students to access from all schools in case they have an interest that is not readily available at their school. So that will continue to be a focus for us. Additionally, as we continue to expand our partnerships with our county partners, we want to continue to have the hands-on and practical work experience, so that's where we'll partner with you and with the Board of Supervisors to expand those opportunities for our students. We are planning to market these pathways with our academic advising sessions. We'll be doing some training with school counselors and other teams over the summer in order to make sure, and into the school year next year, in order to make sure that everyone's prepared with the background they need to support our students on this. In November, I know there were also questions about how a student could fit a pathway into the already rigorous schedule that's required for even a standard diploma in FCPS, and this is a sample schedule for a student who is earning a standard diploma. Again, there are differences between what's required for advanced and standard, but when we look at this sample on the screen, you'll see that every year, there is an opportunity for at least one pathway elective credit with more opportunities opening in junior and senior year. And we chose to highlight some of the boxes in yellow to show that there's also a chance for a student to still earn another elective credit. So if a student was pursuing a world language, even though that's not considered or requirement for the standard diploma, again, there's still an opportunity for a student to do a world language or an elective outside of a pathway while still focusing on going deeper into that chosen career preparation. So we feel that we've made good progress on the development of the pathways, and we're excited to continue that work.
All right. Thank you. So Jen, I think, did a really nice job of highlighting some of the things that have been accomplished over the last couple of years with respect to these actions in the strategic plan, and I just wanted to build on Dr. Duran's comments about really the main thrust of this conversation is to really ask for your support in delaying our timeline to implement changes to the local graduation requirements. So I wanted to just provide a little bit more information in terms of the why that we're making that recommendation. And the first piece really is, as Dr. Duran said, there's a lot of things that are happening at the federal and the state level with respect to policy changes. So the first thing is really all of the work that the Virginia Board of Education is considering right now with respect to changing the graduation requirements at the state level, thinking about potential changes to both the standard or perhaps even the advanced studies diploma, thinking about the types of verified credits that would be required for graduation, and a number of other things, including thinking about the importance of work-based learning and how that might factor into standards for graduation. So as we think about those changes, the timeline that the Board of Ed is on is illustrated here, and the big thing that I would call your attention to is June 22nd, that's their next scheduled meeting, but then in the summer, June 27th, you see is the opportunity for public comment. So we had discussed at last week's work session on the CTAC and the FATE reports, the opportunity for the Board, or at least the school division to weigh in. So Dr. Locker, Dr. Duran, and I are kind of crafting our plan of how we will provide information during that public testimony, and we probably want to supplement that information with some written information as well, since we're limited to three minutes of public testimony in the public hearing. But this is just one stop of many stops that the State Board of Ed is on over the summer to collect public input, and we believe that all of that will be culminating in December as they work to try to vote on what those standards of accreditation changes might look like. So if they were to vote in December of 2017, that's a little challenging for us in terms of, a little challenging for us in terms of how we might choose to make changes to our local graduation requirements. So just as a point of recall here, when we think about the local requirements here in FCPS, we're really talking about social studies. We require the two world history credits for the standard diploma where the state only requires one, and we're talking about science where we require the three content area or disciplines in science where the state only requires two. So in previous discussions with respect to our actions in the strategic plan, we had discussed here with you that we might be able to create more flexibility by making some changes there. What our hesitancy is, is to make changes at the local level and then have the state make changes and have us be, you know, just flip-flopping kind of back and forth, and I don't think we want to put our students or our teachers or really anybody in that position if we can help it. So the timeline then, as I said, is a little tricky for us because we look at October 2017 as the first date listed here, and that's the date when we need to be thinking about updating all of our information for academic advising and registration with students. So if the state doesn't make changes till December of 2017, and we want to be in alignment with the state, then that really means we need to wait until the state makes their changes to begin making our proposed changes as well. So the timeline here really talks about how we would go about this process, and between essentially December 17 and October of 2018, then we can start working to figure out how we would make sense of the state changes and how we would prepare our schools in terms of the changes that they might need to make to their course offerings, to their staffing plans, and those are both really critical issues. And we had a principal who was gonna be here with us today, and he actually was here, but he had to go back to school just given the timing and everything, and that's totally fine. But when you talk to the school principals, it's really important, I think, to understand their concerns about making sure that we're in alignment with the timeline of the state changes, because if we were to, for example, make a change to our science requirements and go down to two disciplines, that may actually change the licensure that the staff at that particular school might have. So when you talk about science licensure, you're not licensed to teach high school science, you're licensed to teach physics, or you're licensed to teach chemistry, or you're licensed to teach earth science. And if we make changes to our local graduation requirements, we need to understand not only does that, what does that do to our course-taking patterns for students, but also what does it do to our staffing at each of our schools. So we really need to make, making sure that we're working with our high school principals, our middle school principals, and HR. So on this timeline that we're proposing, if we wait for the state changes to come out in December of 2017, work through the school year into October of 2018, we can then be prepared to go into the 1920 school year with changes that would be on track and in sync at both the state and the local level. So that's really kind of the main thrust again of this conversation today is to see if there's Board support for delaying one year changes to our local graduation requirements. So I'm gonna pause there, that was a little bit over 15 minutes, and see what kinds of comments and questions the Board might have.
So I have Ms. Schultz, followed by Ms. Strauss, followed by Ms. McLaughlin.
So I'm very excited for this topic because I talk to students a lot about this. In fact, I just had another meeting at Chantilly with students and some of their academy folks, instructors, and so there's a number of different questions I have on here. Let me start with the question of access to courses, and in particular, the cyber courses, and whether we've looked at the equitable access to the jobs pipeline, because it's one thing to say, oh, well, we're not offering everything everywhere, but are we offering the thing that leads most likely to jobs at the most places? That's like my, one of my takeaways is that if we marry where the jobs are with what we're offering certifications in and how many different places, the thing that has, or the areas that have the most potential jobs should be the thing that we're trying to offer in the most number of places. Have you thought about that?
So it's a very relevant question and a very relevant time, and VDOE is actually pushing out a new cyber course that for 1819, you'll see in course review, the request to offer that at all base high schools, or make it available for all base high schools.
Because this is one of those things that not only can kids get a certification in, but not only can they go to college, they can get paid while they're in college and have a guaranteed job when they get out. I mean, that should be like one of our, you know, frankly, our jewels of offerings. Okay, so that's number one.
If I could just add one more point on that. In tomorrow's joint work session with the Board of Supervisors, there's gonna be discussion about the workforce development collaboration at the county level, at our level in FCPS, and at the community college level, and we've been working a lot with the Vice President at the Community College, Stephen Partridge, who will be presenting tomorrow about trying to build out some of these pathways and pipelines as well, and he's been very, very receptive to working with us, so we're excited about that.
It's one thing to have a pipeline to graduation, it's a whole different thing to have a pipeline to a job.
Yeah.
I mean, now, now we're, now, now we're moving.
Yeah.
The next thing is, is there is a, whether they're getting the advanced diploma or the standard diploma, there is a tremendous frustration in the lack of elective flexibility. And the suggestion has been made time and again, and this is student-generated. One, can we please have languages from middle school count towards languages for graduation? That's number one. So if they have to take three years of a language, start counting in middle school. So that's number one. Number two is for students, particularly students with disabilities and particularly students with dyslexia, foreign language is a difficult, difficult notion to get their head around for three years. And can we please offer or get the state to entertain coding as a language? Why not? You know, that's the second one. The third is to create the path for additional language, because of the language barrier, and maybe we solve it a little bit with the social studies. The other barrier on electives is the fact that we make JV and varsity athletes take PE. And is there not some common sense around the fact that, you know, athletes who are on the field, in a pool, on a balance beam, you know, on a court, you know, not two hours a week, not five hours a week, often 10, 15, 20 hours a week, seriously, do they have to be in the physical education? I'm not saying not the health component, not the driver's ed component, but can we not look at, you know, an equivalency chart of, you know, athletic, you know, acumen and endeavor on, on all of our teams, particularly if it's a VHSL sport, but I'm sorry, but if you're in the, on the water, crewing, you know, I don't care that it's not a VHSL sport, do you need to really be running on a track? I don't know. And that that would create some additional flexibility. And then this is just one more, throw it out there. I saw up there the question of getting work and internships. You know, we've had this big, huge discussion around naming rights for cash. Why not naming rights for things like internship, you know, relationships, you know, that they're funding work-related, job-related internships? I'd happily, if somebody says, you know, we're gonna fund, you know, whatever, 20, 20 interns a year for industry certifications, and they, oh, by the way, they get on-the-job training, I'd put their name on something in lights, you know, because now what you're doing is you're reinforcing the public-private partnership, and you're talking about CTE, and you're talking about a pathway to not only graduation but jobs. So, and then is, on the June 22nd, where is that?
Luther Jackson Auditorium.
So...
27.
That's the state?
Yes. State Board of Ed.
And are you, are we only able to present like as a division, or can we present individually, or?
Individually. Both, you could do either one.
So, so this is a commute, can you just describe?
It's a public hearing, so the State Board of Ed will be traveling around the Commonwealth, and it's an opportunity for public and/or Board members, actually, previous ones have had Board members, and we got a report at our last meeting, and so it's opportunity to speak for three minutes, similar to like what happens at your Board meeting, get up and share your comments on the plan.
So, and my comment on this plan is, I get that would be more convenient to do this, but that also means that 50,000 high school kids get one less year of a fixed system, and so I'm not, I'm not in favor of dragging it out. I'm, I'm in favor of doing whatever we can to get a sense from them as early as we can, and, and trying to be responsive for 50,000 high school kids. So I'm for shortening it up.
Ms. Strauss, followed by Ms. McLaughlin.
Okay. Thank you. There's one thing if we can, some of the changes, if it looks as though we're gonna get, if VDOE is going to make changes in coding and sort of those STEM fields, I guess one thing, and get a sense of and go forward with that. I would be a little reluctant to make some of the changes dealing with three laboratory science versus two, and world history one, world history two, because that, that makes a huge change in teaching staff licensing and all the rest of it. So I kind of want to know what the state is gonna do with those. The other question is that we have always had a program, sort of a work-study program where kids, juniors and seniors can work, and they were supervised through usually marketing teachers. And one of the first rounds of budget cuts, early on, we shortened those contract lengths for teachers who are supervising that. And so I, where is that? Is that something that you plan to bring back? Is it when we look at career pathways and work supervision, are you anticipating that you'll come back with a totally different look in that sort of work supervision, who's gonna do that, et cetera? So where are you with that one?
So you're referring to the business and marketing cooperative education programs?
Yes.
And those are still available to students. The contracts for the supervising teachers were shortened, you're correct.
Exactly.
And we have, I would need to pull the numbers to see how those enrollment patterns have changed or if they've changed, but we still do have enrollment in both of those, and those are available for any student taking a business or marketing class who is holding a job that will earn them 360 hours for one credit in a school year or 720 hours for two credits. So some of our students are earning two credits a year in that. One of the points of advocacy that we'd like to have with the state is that that internship, if you will, or co-op credit is only available for students in a business or marketing class right now. So that's limiting the number of students who are able to earn credit for an internship, and we'd like to have advocacy that an internship credit or something to that line of work-based learning opportunity may be made available. So we're, we're looking at ways to do that as well.
So with that, because I know years ago, we had, we had hoped to, for example, Thomas Jefferson, that has just their amazing senior project available, the problem is, is that those students... The problem is, is that those students are often so advanced in math and science that they're sort of doing graduate college-level work. Um, and it's not realistic, because I remember we looked into that years ago. It's not realistic to actually seek, other than a handful of kids in other schools, those kinds of opportunities. But, um, so, all right, so again, your advocacy is you're looking at other career pathway, in other words, other issues within that sixteen, um, career pathway, CTE stuff that was actually, in fact, what, twenty years ago? So that there would be specific requirements? So it's not just go out and get a job and we'll check to see if we're actually going? Okay, so that would be a more specific thing. So in order to broaden that, are you waiting for VDO, VDOE to offer requirements for that? Or can we do that on our own?
We're doing a little bit of both. So we're developing what we can now, given the current opportunities for students to earn credits on a transcript. And then we're also looking for opportunities for them to explore those, even if they can't currently get a credit back on their transcript. So for Genesis Works, for example, they are getting the payment from their job. They're getting the credible work experience. We're looking at how we can get them industry certifications as part of that. And then also trying to connect with other online learning opportunities that are in business or marketing, for example, so that they can also get co-op credit if they need elective credit. We're also really trying to develop those targeted, and you said this, targeted internships or work-based learning experiences that will lead to career pathways. So not just a job that is paying, but a job that will lead to another more higher-paying job after high school graduation or continued studies in college.
Right, because I know in the co-op program, often it's a job. And it's, it's less specific. Now, the last question I have is, the state requirement for one online course before graduation. So is that still a requirement and where are we with that?
Yes, that's still a requirement for all of our students who enter high school now. And we are fulfilling that through our economics and personal finance course. We have developed online modules that fulfill that requirement.
So by and large, is that, I mean, what percentage of our students are actually satisfying that credit through taking that particular course?
Almost all of our students. The only students who we've had to support differently are sometimes our transfer students. We look for other opportunities. If they did not take economics and personal finance with us, they may need a different support for that. But otherwise, any student who takes economics and personal finance with us satisfies the requirement as set forth by VDOE.
And then when that, when the personal finance course was required by the state and then we had kind of rushes to figure out which teachers were going to teach that? Was that going to be in business? Was that going to be in CTE? Was that going to be? So where are we with who is teaching that?
We still have significant flexibility with that. So we can have our, our business teachers, our CTE teachers. We can have math teachers or social studies teachers. So there is significant flexibility and schools determine who's most available based on their overall staffing and where the course requests fall. We also have a significant enrollment in our self-directed economics and personal finance course. So students are taking that, using that hundred forty clock hour policy that was, uh, developed. Uh, even prior to, um, this year, that's been in place. And VDOE has given us additional flexibility to look at other ways to do that.
I think this is a good example. I, I think we have like thirteen different ways that kids can satisfy that requirement. So this is a really good example for me of when we get an additional requirement at the state level that we have to fit into a student's schedule that gives them even less flexibility in course-taking selections, that, you know, we have been able to come up with some creative ways to allow students to do some things, um, to mitigate some of, you know, some of that loss of flexibility.
Right, because when that first came in, we were seeing loss of, of opportunities for kids to take other electives. So some of the electives that kind of fell back, is that coming back again? That students have so many different ways of satisfying that? I mean, what's the overall fallout on that?
And can I ask that, as part of your response to that, that you follow up on the questions that Ms. Schultz had regarding electives and flexibility of programming? So that ties the two together.
So starting with that question about, are, is it opening up room for other electives? Absolutely. So many of our students who are enrolling in the self-directed course, they take that as an eighth course or they take that as a summer course. And we have two summer sessions for that. So some students just finished summer session one. We had, I'm looking at about fifteen hundred in that session.
Oh, wow.
And...
Wow.
So for the second summer session, we have over two thousand students registered. And in the first session, we had between fifteen hundred and two thousand registered. So it is...
So do the kids have to pay for that? Because that was when it was first coming through.
Yes.
If it was an eighth course, you have to pay for that?
Correct. So it is not the same cost as a typical online course that we have. They're currently paying a hundred forty dollars without any reduction in fees. Uh, those who are on free or reduced do have the fifty percent or the ten percent.
Okay, well, that's, it's improved then, all right, great.
Yes, we've made great strides in that.
Good, all right.
And that's not the only way, but that's one of the thirteen ways. And it seems to be growing in popularity every year.
Great, thank you.
Can I just ask a clarification question on that online, the self-directed? For the students who, um, and I forget what we call it, Ms. Evans, um, where they, they can have a delayed first period or they take, you know, a delayed arrival, can they take it first period at home as a part of a seven? Not an eight? So that it's a part of their regular?
Yes.
So, so they could come to school for the second period and take in the first period at home, if you will? Okay, thanks.
Okay.
So, so Ms. Schultz had a number of, uh, points which, which I think we want to follow up on. So just going back through my list here. Um, we talked a little bit about the access to cyber courses, so we're working on that. We can provide you with updates as that develops. Um, you talked about the lack of elective flexibility and the need to create as much urgency around, um, our timeline with implementing, you know, policy changes as possible, which we would concur with. So to that regard, you talked about a couple of things. One, language credits, uh, in the middle school when students take, uh, world language in the middle school, granting high school credit for that. So that is something that we're exploring. We're piloting right now in a couple isolated areas. One of the big issues, again, always comes back, and I wish our high school principal would have been able to be with us today because I think, um, it's important to listen to some of the staffing issues and challenges. But one of the issues and challenges that comes back when we do that is that the high schools are really concerned about the impact on their staffing. So if, if they have students, for example, many students taking Level One or Level One and Two at the middle school level, then theoretically, they're only going to have students taking Levels Three maybe, or maybe Three and Four, or maybe Three, Four, and AP and IB. But it's going to be less at the high school level, which means they're going to need less staffing in that particular language, which means that teacher who's probably only licensed to teach in that world language is not going to be there full-time. So those are the kinds of things, those, and challenges that we need to work around. So that's why we're trying to do some piloting. Uh, but it makes a lot of sense and, and it is something that we're working on. Another thing you asked about was coding for world languages. And we had, um, really advocated at the state level for that. Um, and we were told no, that that was not something that the state was willing to do.
There was a bill in the Assembly that died on that notion.
So that is something that we can continue to advocate for, um, but it's going to take a little bit more action than just, uh, VDOE action.
Does that have to be a bill? I mean, why can't that be a directive from the State Board of Education?
Well, it can, but then the Assembly can override that and which is what they did.
Yeah.
But there is one other thing that we don't have enough information on, but another reason why delaying will be good is, uh, coming out of the Assembly was passed a, something called an innovation, School District Innovation Grant Opportunity. And it's something we're still, it hasn't been released the details, but in it, we could, if we would apply, we certainly want to come back to you. But we have a plan here that would align directly to what we think the requirements are. And we may be able to apply for some of those things in that. And basically what the bill that went through the Assembly and that the governor did sign, uh, basically states that divisions can put together a plan that has their own flexibility, submit it as its own, almost like a charter-type opportunity. So that's something we might be able to do as well.
And this is where I'm going to get all mommy lion on our need to be more demonstrative. Our entire special ed population out, outpopulates Arlington School District. I mean, we, and so, so the need to have something alternative in a language, um, category, and plus, we need coders in this country. So I mean, this is like, I, I, I feel like we could more definitively express why this is so critical. And then the last thing I had on my list was the PE.
Mm-hmm. So again, that's one that, I mean, I think makes a lot of sense. It's one that we've explored. It is, as you say, it's, it's really hard, the way that we've set it up, because PE is coupled with the health and it is coupled with the driver's ed. So, but that's, it's something, again, that we need to work with our high school principals on to see if we can decouple that. And ultimately, what it comes down to is if you were to, if you were able to do that and grant the student credit for the PE, where does the student go? If they're taking the quarter of health, where do they go for the quarter of PE?
You've now opened up electives, which is exactly what they're looking for. And, and electives that could allow them to do industry certification classes.
Yeah.
Because kids on an advanced diploma, um, uh, approach think, I don't have any time for electives. I can't, I can't go to an academy class. I can't explore any CTE, um, industry certs because my schedule doesn't allow it, because we give them no breathing room.
Hey, we all agree.
No, but my conversa, the, the conversation got cut off before they got a chance to answer, so.
Uh, Ms. ...
Again, a lot of work that we still need to do there, so.
Ms. McLaughlin, Ms. Hines, and then Mr. McElveen.
So, uh, first of all, my, uh, appointee to this CTE Advisory Committee, um, retired engineer, has been exceedingly frustrated that, whether it's due to the state or whatever, that we don't have coding as an option. And for some reason, he was under the impression that Louden was able to make that work. So, um, yeah, I, I think either way, it would be important that this board get clarity because our job is not only to help govern this school system, but to help inform our General Assembly downstate. And, you know, I, my supervisor, John Cook, loves to take opportunities to say that we are not being innovative enough in workforce readiness. Like, that's just one of his favorite things to opine on. And so to me, this is one of those things where you look at coding, you look at cybersecurity and all the things that we know, there's a real workforce demand. And I can't point to how we're growing, you know, definitively in, in those opportunities for our students. And the other thing that's concerning to me is where the, it looks like, the appearances of the tail wagging the dog. So, uh, you know, if, what does the General Assembly give governance to the Virginia Department of Education? Let alone their Board of Education? But things like the Portrait of a Graduate and Twenty-First Century Learning? And yet you've said coding can't be an alternative to foreign language? I mean, at this point, my, my next step request out of this, I wanted to make sure Ms., Dr. Pussey heard it. Um, my next step request would be, where's Michael Malloy to better inform this board on what's going on with that? Because we have this legislative package and some of us have argued that it's an encyclopedia that they don't read and we won't get strategic movement on. But I, I think if we were doing more effective lobbying and we have a very effective Northern Virginia delegation, I think that if we just give them the, the talking points and the, the information they need, they could convincingly go down to Richmond and say, "Hey, everybody, you know what happens up in Northern Virginia? If you get more people trained to do that work and they live in Virginia, we get that tax base and, I mean, it's just, and we grow our economy." So I would like to...
Yeah, I, I mean, I think you're, I think your point's well taken. And that was kind of the sidebar here, is that we needed to work that in better with the, our legislative agenda and strategy. So, you know, currently, we're not allowed to offer it, uh, but that doesn't mean that we can't continue to try and take another, another approach. Um, so I mean, that's definitely something we can work on.
Thank you. I mean, one of the things I say to advocates who come up to me all the time and say, "I need you to change this in Fairfax County schools." And what I say is, "I need you to package for me, what's the identified problem? And what's the identified solution?" And so if, if staff could say, you know, "Here's how we would see the identified solution," then we can then present that, um, in our legislative package, but really front and center. Uh, because I think sometimes we get very lofty, very high level. But if we look at their bills, their bills are usually very specific language. So I think we're probably all on the same page, but I want us to be more intentional.
There was a real concerted effort to do the, to lobby for this at the Assembly. However, there was also a concerted effort on the part of the Foreign Language Teacher Associations to lobby against it. And so the Assembly pulled back and said, "Let's study this a little bit more." I don't want to say they were opposed to it, but because of that strong voice that made its way into Richmond, they felt we needed to pause. And then the foreign language lobby was suggesting, "We'll look at substitutions, perhaps for science or for math, math requirements, but not for foreign language." So that's where it all got tied in. There were many school divisions that were actively lobbying for that, but it got all convoluted amongst that conversation.
Dr. Duran, I can't thank you enough for that context because after our work session we had earlier today, I can completely understand that when you peel back the onion, the complexity of an issue suddenly becomes, you know, more difficult. So that, I mean, that's, that's really important. And that's part of then our dialogue with our community when they think, "Why aren't you having progress with that?" Okay, so coding, cyber, um, I think you put in it's the cybersecurity courses. I really wanted to emphasize what Ms. Schultz said earlier. Like, I think we're all committed to access an opportunity. But when I'm talking to a partner from Deloitte who specializes in cybersecurity and says, "We can't fill those six-figure salaries with people who have cybersecurity and data analytics skills," that, I mean, to me, this is where I want to make sure when we're really looking at pathways to graduation, that we're opening up opportunities. I didn't grow up in a family where that would even be on my radar. And when I go to college, the colleges aren't, you know, giving that kind of guidance. So I, I want to see us get stronger, but mostly, we've got to go with access. Um, the other thing is that with the physical education and the health, I'll just echo, I hear what Ms. Schultz is saying as the parent of kids who've played multiple high school sports. But I also know, not every kid's going to play three sports that's going to carry them through the entire academic year. Um, and so the, that could be more complicated. But I do know we have kids who are year-round swimmers, year-round gymnasts, year-round soccer players, who their parents have their checkbooks to prove that the kids are on it. They have the registered, registration hours the kids are doing. I mean, those alone, then you're not even incumbent on who made the team, who got cut from the team, all that stuff. But we, the, being able to open up, so my, I look at these kids who are doing a year-round competitive sport outside of the school system and could be then spending their time with some really enriching courses would be good. Um, and then in terms of where we are with, uh, in, in the PowerPoint, earlier in the slide presentation, it said academic planning tools for students and families. And I, I'll be honest with you, I, I have a junior. I should know what that means. I don't know what you mean by that. So could you guys just quickly say what is that and how parents and kids are then understanding what that is?
Sure. So the schools have each rolled out a new online course catalog that's much more user-friendly, and that's through robust work and partnership with DIT, who have developed this online course catalog. Before, all of our schools were posting PDF documents. So we're sixty or seventy pages and you have to Ctrl+F in order to find any course that you're looking for. Um, so now we have a very user-friendly interface. We also have our district course offerings available in that online manner as well. In addition, I was referring to the Student Learning Plan and our resources. There are rich resources available through our Naviance and Family Connection platform. Uh, we've enhanced the tools that we've had for schools. They continue to grow in flexibility and opportunities for students to plan out their four years in high school. They start that in eighth grade and then they update that as they go throughout high school. And also, our X2VOL has been the resource that's, um, applied for schools to track service learning hours. So those are the three that are most available to families. And, uh, each of the school teams have been working to provide the access and then the training on that with their students.
Okay. So my humble request as a next step is, it might be helpful in the PowerPoint if that's the only document that the public can see and that the board can reference. It'd be great if you could mention those three or four things that you discussed. Um, because I think we, we as board members have an opportunity to help educate our families to look out for these things. And then to something Ms. Strauss brought up, uh, my youngest son is the first in our family that had the personal finance course requirement. And I was thrilled when I found out that he could take this hundred and forty-dollar online course over the summer because I was dreading that we were going to be paying eight hundred dollars for an online course this summer. So could you just clarify what the... So, could you just clarify what the $140 one is? And is that something that all the guidance counselors in the entire county know to tell kids about? Because I, I, and, and how come it's no longer the $800 course that we normally charge for an online class?
It's a great question. So, there is an option for a full online course through the online campus, and that's at the $680 per course. So, that's available for students who want to dive deeper into the content and have a, an instructor assigned to them to work through the, the content of the course. The $140 version is a self-directed course. So, students are working through the modules in Blackboard that are designed to cover all the content that's required, and they're taking assessments to document their understanding of the content. And then, there is a monitor at the central office level, or during the summer, we have so many students, we need monitors from each of the schools who can answer questions, but there's no direct instruction on that $140 course. And that's how we're able to offer it at a reduced price.
And I, I, again, as a parent, want to thank you and everyone involved in doing that, because I think for a lot of kids who didn't want to lose the amazing course offerings during the academic year, but $680 for a lot of families is a lot. So, the fact that we've created this lower-cost option for a state-mandated requirement, which I don't discount, but I, for a lot of kids, the, the less deeper dive for what personal finance was supposed to be about, it's good. And then, my final request is about math. I'm still troubled about our math pathway, and I've had these conversations with Dr. Presidio. You know, who's driving the bus that says Algebra II has got to be the course that everybody's got to take in order to graduate? Because that's actually nationally recognized as a, as a hurdle for a lot of kids. Number two, you've got economics and statistics that are becoming far more relevant math courses, and yet, we still are driving everybody on the traditional path of get to calculus, when AP Statistics and AP Economics would be far more relevant to a lot of collegiate career preparations. And so, I just wondered if we're doing any examination of that for math curriculum? Because it feels a little antiquated to me where we still are.
That is a lot of the work at the state level and the, um, High School Redesign Committee, and they are looking at flexibility around a couple of things. One, what the courses would be, would be. And two, how many assessments would be required for the verified credits? I know you've talked about that a lot with me in terms of nationally, you know, we only are required to have one at the high school level, and yet, we've been requiring several more here in Virginia. So, those, that is happening, and I do believe what we're hearing from the Board of Ed and Dr. Staples, that we'll see some flexibility, and that's what we'll find out this year.
Just clarity-wise, I, I don't think I was really talking about assessments.
Well, that was an additional comment, but, but for the first part, that, that is also a flexibility that is being discussed.
That they're trying to look for some math flexibility, not for scripturally saying, it's this pathway or no pathway for math.
Correct, correct. I just added the other part, because it's also connected to some of the assessments that are required for the verified credit in math.
So, I would just say to what your ask was of us, um, I certainly support that if you need to have our blessings on a delay, you know, whatever you believe in your professional judgment is needed, I would just say, the only urgency is, I want to see us improving access, so it's not if you're lucky enough to be in the Chantilly Pyramid, that children have access to, you know, career preparation courses. We should be really building those into as many of our high schools as possible. Um, you know, the equity, uh, opportunity.
Thank you, Ms. McLaughlin. Those are great comments. Ms. Hines, and I'm going to urge all of the board that we have been here very long today, and we have a closed session, and I know people have evening engagements, so if we can be brief.
Um, yeah, thank you. So, um, speaking of really exciting courses, that actually, it's hard to have everywhere, right? The, the graduation for the firefighter school, that was amazing. It was just amazing last Friday night to see that, the inaugural class, right? And where they actually, yeah, Mr. Moon is there and Mr. McElveen, and, um, those kids actually, you know, spend every other day, all day, at the firefighter's training facility, which there's only one in the county, you know, so. But thanks to transportation, uh, you know, we've managed, I guess, to get every kid there who wanted to do it. Unfortunately, it's somewhat centrally located, so doing our best with equity, right? Um, on those kind of things. Um, uh, my only question on this was, I think it's Slide 12, and, and forgive me if you already answered this, but the very bottom, um, on science, requests from schools to add earth science as a science course offering. Um, it, it sounds to me like we're planning to wait a year to implement this, and I, I wondered, um, specific to that request, is that necess, i- is, is the state really holding us back on that one?
No, the state's not holding us back on that request. That would be a local decision, and it could come up through the Course Review Committee, uh, that you'll see in September and October. There is a small group of students at Lee High School who are piloting that through our ESAL program this year, and there are principals with requests to expand that. So, we'll continue to discuss it over the next few months. It does bring up the larger conversation about what science courses do we want all of our students to have before they graduate? And that's why the deeper dive into it and taking it, um, slowly to take a thorough look is critical.
Okay, but we're going ahead and putting it in places where, you know, it makes sense right now?
We have the availability, or the option to do that, yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, that's it.
Thank you, Ms. Hines. Uh, Mr. Ma... Followed by Mr. Moon.
So, I really wanted to briefly touch on the 16, um, career areas, if that's what it's called. Um, is that something we have, um, have created ourselves? Is it something we've adopted from others? Uh, if so, who have we taken it from?
It's a national, nationally-recognized career cluster model.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Moon, please.
Thank you. Uh, just briefly, common word two, and possibly a question, is, uh, all you, you mentioned about a, a high school principal's concern regarding a world language teachers, how the staff, if they're boys, middle schools, you know, students can take world language Level One, then they may have an effect upon high school, uh, world languages, teacher staffing situation. Um, that, I'm, if a boy, middle schools need, want to take, first of all, I think we should give them an opportunity, as far as, you know, learning acquisition of a, a world language is concerned. Or you start up, that is why we are trying to introduce, you know, elementary school. I mean, there's no reason to stop middle schoolers having that opportunity. So, I would, I mean, disagree with, uh, I mean, if there's a concern, that's something we need to address, but the notion that we need to wait until high schools, then I strongly disagree. So, in that regard, you know, going back to my kids' middle school years, I, please correct me if I'm wrong, you know, generally, a middle schooler's day, it's eighth graders taking Level One, seventh graders do not, to get those opportunities, correct?
That's correct, and we're looking at other options for seventh graders.
Sure, I mean, I would, you know, strongly encourage our staff, working with the schools to find that up, find, uh, find the way to provide the opportunity for seventh graders to be able to start, not wait until, not necessarily until, wait, if seventh graders want to do it, as a, let them do it. If a boy, as a boy, middle schoolers take world languages, those high school teachers could come to middle schools to teach. And also, as they, you know, finish their, let's say, Level One through AP, Level Two Years in Middle School, maybe a couple of years in high school, they will free them time to try other electives, or even second world language opportunity. You know, as a person who enjoys learning a, you know, you know, world language, you know, if there is an opportunity for, you know, our students to try more than just one other world language, why not?
Ordinarily, I wouldn't do this, because I agree with everything that you just said. But since our high school principal colleague is not here, the, the one thing that I would say is, it, it is very difficult at times to operationalize all these changes in a comprehensive high school. And we recognize that we want to make these changes, but we have to do it in a way that principals on the ground can actually put in place. So, if we go through just the things that we've just discussed, right, today, coding for world language credit, expansion of world language credit for kids that would get it, expansion of cyber courses, 16 new career pathways that we would want, equity of access to new career pathways, that's a lot of moving parts for, uh, an individual high school to get around, because all of those require certain licenses, it requires a certain amount of staffing changes to your staffing plan. And I think it just takes a little bit more time, probably, than any of us around this table are comfortable with.
But Dr. Presidio, doctor, that's very fair, but I've seen this model ever since I started as a board member, going back to 1995. So, in, i- i- in that area, nothing has changed for the last 20 years. You know, I think 20 years, you may think that that's not enough time to work on something like that.
No, I'm definitely not saying that.
But I don't want to wait on another, another 20 years.
Yeah.
I may no longer be a school board member for the next 20 years, but...
I just want to make the point, and I totally appreciate your point, but there are over 50 actions related to teaching and learning in the strategic plan that we're asking schools to try to help figure out how to implement. And with each of those, there's a lot of change involved in it, and we're just in year three of the strategic plan. So, we want to do all these things. I totally agree with the urgency, um, but I'm just trying to give the perspective of how difficult it is.
Again, going back to my, going back to 1995, if I could, you know, I've been waiting for 20, more than 20 years for, to talk about this again, so I can wait, but, but not again another 20 years.
Absolutely.
And thank you.
Understood.
Ms. Evans?
Yes, thank you. Most of my questions have been answered. I want to thank you for your work on this, because it's, it's clearly very, very important work. Um, I do want to be, uh, clear, and I'm sorry, I must have missed the, the, the specific timeline. You, um, are, are saying that we need to delay this so we don't inadvertently run counter to whatever VDOE does. So, you're suggesting delaying from when to when? This fall to the next fall?
1819 to 1920 for implementation of...
Oh, for 1920, I see. And you don't...
Again, there, there are many parts of what we talked about. So, what we're suggesting the delay on is any changes that the board would like to make to local graduation requirements, particularly in social studies and science. All of the other things that we've talked about are things that we can work on, um, and that we are working on. Obviously, we need to work a lot faster in a number of these areas, um, but it's just with respect to the changes to the local graduation requirements in science and social studies that we are recommending that the board wait a year to be in sequence with the changes that we should be receiving from the state to the state graduation requirements.
But we're receiving that next, this coming December, correct?
Correct. That's the timeline that we've been given.
And we don't, so I, I'm sorry, I guess I'm not understanding, because, uh, why would, why would that be a problem then for us to implement the following?
Because we start our registration process, our course enrollment process, the publication of all of our materials, and the staffing process, all of that actually begins in October.
Right. We have a pretty good idea of where they're going, do we not, or do we?
Uh, with respect to the, the changes and how the state might change science or social studies, no.
And we don't?
No.
We don't.
I don't, I don't feel confident saying that I would suggest that the board is going to do X.
We have some ideas, but there is a lot of discussion going on, and there's a lot of division in some areas, just put it that way.
And as Michael Malloy told me, he said, it's a moving target, Jen. It, all of these actions are moving targets, and so, we're really waiting to try to figure out where they'll land.
Okay. Well, I, I see why you don't want to do anything that would ultimately potentially conflict, uh, with, with what the state gives us. I, it's, it's a little disheartening to think we can't turn around between December of one year and September of the next, but, uh, thank you for clarifying your request.
Thank you, Ms. Evans. Uh, before I go to go-backs, I did want to just make a comment, actually, two. First comment is, I want to thank this team. You all have been wonderful. I've been lucky to participate in some of your conversations with Northern Virginia Community College in the context of the original Mount Vernon High School, and, um, have heard from the provost that it's because of your dedication and, um, hard work that they feel like they're moving this forward. So, thank you very much. Uh, and then, on a second level, I really appreciated the conversation about language in middle school. The Internationalization Task Force a few years ago made the recommendation to return to the approach that Fairfax County Public Schools used to have on language in middle school. When I went to middle school in Fairfax County, which was 40-something years ago, um, at that point, the, you were given the option to take a language in middle school, and you were actually encouraged, over the course of your middle and high school, to take language every year, but you could actually start a second language. And so, I very much, um, appreciate Mr. Moon's comment on this, and I would love to see us follow up on the original recommendations from the task force to see, uh, language earlier, because it does two things. One, allows those that are passionate about languages to pursue their passion, while at the same time, for those that are only taking language to, um, for one of the better term, check a box, so that, for their college applications, it frees up electives later on where they can pursue some of this workforce development, um, opportunities. And so, I don't think that we should look at the languages in isolation, we should look at it as a way of creating opportunities, very similar to when my children were in seventh grade and had the opportunity to take algebra. Neither one of them ever intended to be engineers, but I wanted them to take the opportunity because it created flexibility in their high school schedule to take more electives.
Amen.
I think you appointed me to that task force. Uh, okay. Um, now, if we can have Ms. Strauss and Ms. Schultz for go-backs, and then I would like to quickly move on into the HRAC after we do a vote on the recommendation.
Hey, quick question, because we hear from, in the business community, and somebody was talking about Deloitte, um, positions that they can't fill. Is it that some of the businesses in Northern Virginia are looking to employ students right out of high school in these fields? Or do they want two years in community college? Or they're looking at, uh, employees who have finished college? I mean, what are our employers actually looking for and asking for us, and we're a K-12?
So, there are positions across the spectrum. I think in the joint, uh, work session with the Board of Supervisors tomorrow, um, the community college staff will speak to that issue. The conversation that we've really had is that we want to position ourselves to make sure that we're filling essentially those job markets that exist with different levels of education. So, making sure that if our kids can come out with some background and some certifications, that might get them in the door, and then keeping them enrolled in the community college to get, to get additional coursework, additional certifications, and hopefully, all the way through that pathway, particularly as it exists into George Mason University, to get a bachelor's degree to open up even more opportunities for them. So, that's the articulation piece that we're trying to get with K-12 and higher ed right now.
Right, because I know we, we had always talked about certifications being useful after high school, if that's what you're into, but then the assumption that they're going to continue.
It's more entry-level and then continue to get your additional education.
Exactly, so, right. So, in other words, they really are looking for associate's degree, college degree to go on.
Yeah.
Great, thanks.
Yeah, and I just want to go back on this lang, uh, on this language, um, thing for an ish, uh, issue for a moment, because I, I'm frankly very disturbed that the Foreign Language Association, um, fought against this, because, um, that's really, there's a false dichotomy there. It's not that we're trying to cut high school foreign language, we're actually trying to grow it. And we're trying to grow the depth of acquisition of target, and if you start kids, um, and I agree, not in eighth grade, in seventh grade, we should be counting, that means they're going to be taking higher-level language courses in high school, um, and, and potentially maybe just take two, because they will have started in seventh grade. They may have actually started younger than that. I mean, I have students who come through, and they may, maybe, for example, they're, they're taking German immersion all the way through. By the time they get to high school, they don't need three more years of, of German, but they do, they have to take it, or they have to take three years of a brand-new language in order to fill the requirement, when what they could use is credit for their middle school years and more in-depth time. Um, and, oh, by the way, maybe an internship somewhere, using their German, that now they get to... So, the, the notion that, um, counting world language acquisition, target language acquisition, starting in middle school will somehow defray jobs in, for foreign language teachers, it, that, that, it's incumbent upon us to dispel that myth, and, and talk about instead how you make the learning experience... you make the learning experience deeper, richer, more target language acquisition by students, by actually starting to count down in, in middle school. So I, I hope we're able to effectively not only counter that argument, but turn it on end, because that's, that's what we should be doing as a system. We should be explaining why this is good, and why actually, if you want to start graduating multilingual students, you know, maybe they're acquiring a language through, or are already bilingual through elementary and middle school, they start a second language and, eh, a second foreign language in middle school, and then maybe just take one or two years in high school and round out that, that, eh, requirement, and now they're on to learning other things.
I want to clarify one thing real quick. You, um, the Foreign Language Association and lobby did not oppose that, they opposed coding being allowed, they actually supported it being in middle school at the national level, I think Dr. Presidio was referring to some concerns of some of the high school scheduling, but they, eh, the lobby and the Association of Foreign Language Teachers actually support nationally it being in middle school.
Those are kids who aren't going to take...
When I commented on the coding, that was the only piece that they opposed.
Okay, I appreciate that clarification. And the kids who we're talking about getting into coding are the kids that are never going to take the three years of foreign language to begin with, because those are the ones who are struggling, who may have a language-based disability, they have dyslexia, they have other things, that they fall off the advanced degree, because they can't get through three years, or the three years are so miserable for them, they never acquire the target foreign language anyway.
So I just, I wa, I just want to sum up, um, just real briefly still on this point, and, and nobody supports languages more than I do. My two sons, eh, in first grade and fourth grade are in a language immersion program, and if we didn't have language immersion in Fairfax County, I wouldn't have come here, quite simply. So I totally agree with everything that we're talking about with respect to the urgency here, I just wanted to give you the perspective that there are some challenges, um, that we face in this work, and we need to do a better job and show better leadership in it, so we can continue to go back to the Strategy Board in terms of our work, um, at the state level for advocacy, and we'll continue to work on the acceleration of some of the things that we've talked about here, with respect to more flexibility and more language opportunities at the elementary and the middle level, and the high school level. Um, but I did just feel like, since my high school colleague was not here, I wanted to at least share some of the concerns, as I have the opportunity to sit with middle school principals and high school principals, and talk about how we're going to do some of these things. They are working really hard at it, we are piloting some things right now that I think will yield some good models for other schools, um, but we definitely still have a lot of work to do here.
So, Ms. Corbin Sanders, I know you said you wanted to go to vote to this, but I'm wondering if there isn't a hybrid model of, of this, of some of the things that you can adva, I mean, I understand maybe not messing with math, that maybe, you know, if the, if the state changes, you know, their requirements, and we go this way, then we're in trouble, but, but aren't there things here that are totally within our purview, that we could advance, that you could press on, and like Mr. Moon says, you know, eh, this is, this can't, we can't just keep waiting for the state to catch up to us. I feel like what we can get done, we need to put on the table and try to advance as far as we can, and, and the things that are left where there could potentially be crossover, okay, you want to extend it, then I, you know, then I would support an extended timeline, but I'm not going to support an extend timeline for everything, because, well, if we're going to make the change, we'll make it all at once.
So just, I just want a, kind of a point of clarification with respect to the timeline. Um, again, in the strategic plan, there's a number of different things, from marketing our existing programs to opening new, small, tailored, career-focused schools. This timeline is only with respect to the actions in the strategic plan about changes, for this board to vote on changes to the local graduation requirements with respect to science and social studies. Everything else we're continuing to work on, but this was only with respect to the science and the social studies, to your point about trying to maybe bifurcate some of this a little bit. Everything else, we would still be working on.
I know, I'm kidding. Um, so can I make a recommendation for next steps? That, um, they come back to us with a plan of what they can go forward with and what they can't, but recognize that we don't want to cause a confusion in the student body by putting out new graduation requirements year one, and then the very next year, putting out new graduation requirements that may conflict with the ones that we put out the first year. So if there are only, if there are things that we know, no matter what, they are not changing, then that makes sense, but if we are reluctant to do that, then that's... So what is your question?
So I, I would just go back, I think, I think my request, um, and advice to the board is the same as when I came in with respect to science and social studies, is that we delay the implementation of the local changes to science and social studies from 18, 19 to 19, 20, for the reasons that we discussed regarding the VDOE changes, and the issues with respect to licensure and staffing that we really need to work out. So originally, when we had scheduled this work session for this spring, early summer, we wanted to bring to you and advise you that we were going to bring this as an action item to vote on, to make changes for 18, 19, as things have developed over the course of this year at the state level, and as we've been planning and working with the high school principals and HR, we really feel like it would be more prudent to wait and try to be in alignment with, eh, where the state is at. However, if you would prefer us, I certainly can appreciate and understand the urgency to go faster, that would be something that, that we would have to try to figure out.
So I would prefer putting it to a vote, that whether or not we should, um, follow staff's recommendation to delay science and social studies for one year.
And there are changes being discussed around the assessment side of science and social studies at the high school level that could impact this decision potentially, so...
So that would be one follow-on. An additional follow-on for today's session would be for staff to relook at the language requirements, to determine if we can increase flexibility and access to a seventh-grade hi- high school credit-bearing course, and a possibility of a coding course. We can't do the coding, so we can actually add to our legislative, our legislative package, so this is the third one, add to our legislative package, a support for coding as a language. That's the three.
And recommendations around what we might be able to do with PE.
And recommendations for PE, so there are four, any other follow-on actions. Can we go ahead and vote on those, and then as much as, and I think this is a really important presentation, but because we have to go into closed session after we have the HRAC, we really need to, um, move on. So do you want to put the four recommendations up?
So would we vote on this, um, at a, at a meeting, or we're just voting on this today?
If you make changes to local graduation requirements, you'd have to do that at a formal meeting, but that's not on these next steps right now.
So Ms. McLaughlin, um, is that your recommendation, or is your recommendation to advocate? Okay? So, the first one? Yeah? On the first one, I guess I have a question, I, I mean, you basically told us that the state said no right now, so what do we need better information? I'm not sure what, what, eh, what the ask was, what's the ask there? I think the ad, ask is to add it to the legislative plan, it's not to inform us, it's to...
Eh, actually, I think we should find out, what, what is the objection? Is the objection just the Foreign Language Teachers, um, Association, is that the problem? Eh, does, does the state have any other feedback? I mean, I think we should hear more, what is the barrier? Because if we figure out what the barrier is, we'll know how to clear it.
Have Michael Malloy prepare a summary for the board of the recent rejection of the coding legislation, and prepare possible legislative proposals for the upcoming session. Ugh, I don't like it at all. Yeah, I know. Right, right, but what you're wanting is, you want, we want him, he's going to get really confused, we need to be intentional with our language. We're asking to prepare a summary for the board of the recent General Assembly legislation that blocked...
Yeah, that blocked, that blocked coding as a substitute for foreign language requirements.
Well, the legis, the legislation, I, I guess you would ask for what happened recently in the movement to pass the bill to allow flexibility?
You could even make it more simpler like that.
Because that's really what it was.
So, Francisco, if you can restate that for the staff, but it's, have Michael Malloy...
Prepare a summary on, on the recent activity of the, um, proposed legislation in the Assembly to allow flexibility.
She spoke, you spoke faster than she can type. Yeah, on recent activity.
On the recent activity of the, eh... General Assembly initiative to allow flexibility for coding in lieu of a foreign language require... World language, sorry, I always say foreign language.
So all those in favor? That's the majority. Yep. Yeah, the next one was mine, and it just, we need to, again, use accurate language so staff knows what we're talking about. So it was providing additional information... Yeah, just say additional information. Regar, and, and you, in the PowerPoint, regarding, so just, yeah, PowerPoint, delete that, regarding academic planning tools. For students and families. That was just so that people understand what planning tools was referring to. So all those in favor? That's unanimous? I think we've already dealt with this, so pull that one off. It's the fourth one that captures it. Say graduate... No, the third bullet, to... Right.
Delay and then the look, you got language requirements for the seventh grade is a separate one.
Correct. And...
You mean world language in this fourth bullet, right?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay.
But in the third bullet, accept staff recommendation to delay science and social studies, eh...
Graduation requirement changes.
Graduation requirement changes.
Any changes to science and social studies graduation requirements.
Yeah.
Right.
And if you will, Ms. Corbin Sanders, I think that you and I both shared that fourth one.
I don't care if my name's on anything, you're welcome, eh, so yes, definitely, it's the two of us. Uh, so on the graduation requirements, can I have a show of hands of supporting staff in delaying? I know that. So it is the majority with a no vote by Ms. Schultz. And the next bullet, I actually think this is one that has multiple people's name on it, I think it's Mr. Moon, Mr., Mrs. Schultz, myself, um, and it's, eh... I think it, it captures it, so all those in favor? On seventh, having a seventh-grade language option, okay?
And on this last one, is it only, is, is the legislative package the only way that we can approach this, or, because I'm thinking more that there are actually some recommendations that need to come from staff to us about...
That's right.
Yeah, so this is, the last one isn't, um, recommendations to be added to the legislative package, it's recommendations from staff about how to address PE? Ms. Wolfberg, on the last, on the last one, it's recommendations, um, from staff...
Flexibility for granting PE credits.
For grant, for granting graduation credits with flexibility in PE.
That's fine.
All those in favor? It's just getting recommendations.
You don't need the, in the legislative package part?
No.
Are you taking that off? Okay, sorry, thanks.
Yes, Ms. Strauss?
Just very quick, for kids who are in, in world language immersion, coming out of sixth grade, don't they continue their, their study of world language in seventh grade? For high school credit?
They, they do, they go into an immersion class, though, for immersion students, so we could talk about that more offline.
Okay, that's fine, because I was startled by that, oh, okay, that's fine.
Okay. Thank you all, that concludes this part of the work session. I am very sorry to say that I don't think we're going to get to the English...